The board is now in session to work on board goals. Alicia and is Kirthe here now too? Yes, Kirthe. Alicia, Kirthe, and Laurel, you should find at the top of your email or close to the top of your email a document with board proposed 4J board goals attached to it. So if you could access those, that would be extremely helpful. As soon as Gordon is here, he will share his screen to be able to have those on screen as well. I want to welcome everyone and call out the names of the board members who are present. We have Judy Newman and Michelle Shu, who is settling in. We have Kirthe Sujakoffman, Laurel O'Rourke, and Alicia Hayes. Gordon Laker will be joining us shortly. I'd like to introduce Superintendent Andy Die, who is also here with us as well. I just indicated to the board members online that they should find a document sent to them. Michelle and Judy, you should have that at your station. So the majority of this document should not be unfamiliar. There's two components, numbers five and six, that are on the newer side. And it is my hope that we could spend approximately half an hour with the hopes that we can collaborate and cooperate and compromise and talk through these. They are not exhaustive. We can add to them. And if we end up at 6 o'clock in a place where we were with our other meetings, then we will revert to a method of indicating support for certain goals using a an approach that we used last year. Those of us in person will use dots to indicate the goals that we support. And those of you who are not in person, it is my hope that you will either text or email Rob Hess and indicate your support for particular goals. So I want to give you a moment, as this came to you very last minute, and I apologize for that, to look that information over so that we don't jump in without everyone being caught up and on the same page. Just to give you a quick glimpse into why the the goals that you are seeing, numbers one through six, are highlighted. They are the visions that were identified by our independent facilitator, Robin Cork, when we met. They are, the last two are, as I indicated, on the newer side. So please note that and make sure you pay attention to those last two. But the other ones were the components of the goals that the board generated and brought forward that received the most the widest cross-section of support. So again, these are not exhaustive. I hope that if you see something that is missing, that you bring it up and we add it to the list. But in the meantime, please look them over and we can do it. Michelle, do you have a question? Debbie? Kirthe says she has not received her meeting link. Okay, no problem. Okay, great. I'm back too. So do we, the two people who believe Laurel has her screen off and Kirthe's is her screen up here, which we can turn off also. So we're waiting for Kirthe to be able to join us. And we are also looking over these. Come on up, Parker. We're talking about board goals. These are the proposed board goals. So you have that in front of you so that you can access those. And welcome, I should say. Hi, Parker. This is the nice part about work sessions, Parker, is we can stop and say hi, welcome. How are you? Glad to see you.
Glad to see you.
So Kirthe let Sabrina know that she has to run an air and then she'll be back in 15 minutes. But I just sent her.
Okay. But you did send her.
I did send her. Just sent her. Yes.
And you'll let her, okay. I'll make sure she knows that. So I see Alicia and Laurel, you guys are looking up. So I'm assuming you had a chance to look over the document. I'll give. Please tell me if I'm interpreting that wrong. In the meantime, I'll let Judy and Michelle have a chance to finish it before we get started.
Is Michelle on screen?
There we go.
All right. The board members that are present, I'm hoping you will indicate if you are not ready. Okay. Since I'm not hearing anyone indicate they're not ready, let us begin. When Gordon arrives, he will share his screen and we can work together on this document if necessary. In the meantime, I will edit it as we are talking together. So Laurel, I see your hand is raised. Do you have something you want to bring up right away?
Are we going to be talking about this now?
Well, Gordon has indicated that it's okay for us to begin without him. And Kirthe has said the same. So that leaves you, myself, Judy, Alicia, and Michelle here to discuss this. So it is our hope that I can start if you'd like, but I also recognize that you have your hand raised. So I wanted to give you the chance to jump in if there was something you wanted to ask before we begin.
Well, I didn't want to ask. I wanted to have the discussion at the work session. So I guess go ahead.
No, by all means, you can jump in.
So I look at these goals and as I had said before at other work sessions, goals need to be of a size that are actionable and you can show that you've done them. These are great ideas. A lot of them cannot be proven that we could do it. And the other ones are that it's way too much. I proposed something smaller than all of this. Are you suggesting that we pick like two of these? Are you suggesting this whole entire document?
I am. I don't want to cut you off.
That was a question.
So the proposal is that if there is no objection, that these are the items that when we discussed over the course of multiple meetings, received the broadest support from board members. It is also based on the research that has been done looking at other school districts and understanding that board goals tend to overlap multiple years. And while they are revisited every year, it is not always expected that each goal is accomplished during that school year. So because we have had such a difficulty in our last few meetings collaborating and cooperating and compromising on our vision of what needs to be done this year, the goals that are listed here, apart from the last two, are the goals that have received the broadest amount of support. The ones that are not there, which I absolutely welcome including, this is not an exhaustive list, are the ones that did not receive the same verbal support in our two prior meetings regarding goals. So if there are goals here that folks would like to discuss, or if there are goals that are missing from this list, I welcome that. Our hope is that if we can come to a shared understanding, we move forward. And if we find ourselves not agreeing on what we want to do, it was proposed by, I believe it was you, Laurel, who requested that we revert to the method we used last year, which was an elimination method. So we are also with dots to indicate the ones that we have the most amount of support for so that when they move into our public meeting, someone can make a motion and we can make a formal vote. So this is a space to discuss. This is a space to communicate both with our words and with our blue dots. They're all blue. So that there is no personality involved in the voting and the understanding of who is voting for what. But this is the, this is the starting point. And as I said, apart from numbers five and six, everything else should be familiar because we spent literally hours discussing these.
The only thing I would, what I'd like to change as far as six is that I proposed it be north. There was other issues happening in north and so including the high school discussion. I can tell that they, that area has gotten kind of the bum deal from 4J for a long time. And I think that should, my vote is for that and for A under number two. And that's really it because we have five months left of this year and we're going to possibly have four new board members next year. And we shouldn't be deciding something this comprehensive for, which could be almost a majority of the board changing. So that's what I propose is something that's actionable and that we can actually focus on and get done. Thank you.
And just to clarify, we're not voting now, but I have.
I think you know what I meant.
I edited the document so that it includes plan for the current North Eugene High School building and the Kelly Middle School and Eugene Goplin programs. So that number six now includes those. And if you look at the document, it says 2022 plus 2023 school year. And then there's a plus sign. These are just proposed. We'll have to revisit these. So if the school board members that are elected would like to shift these goals, that is fine. But as I indicated at the beginning, the pattern across the state of Oregon seems to be that board goals are not limited to specific school years, but recognize that this type of work requires multiple years of attention. And I think we've experienced that in 4J with the question around standardized testing. That one has appeared multiple years in a row. So yes, we will have new board members and yes, we will revisit this. I don't expect we will be able to accomplish these within this year. These are outlining our priorities, our visions, our aspirations with some details on what we can work towards, for sure. Judy and then Alicia. I think Alicia's hand is up first. I don't know why it's not turning up in order.
Oh, Zoom.
You're messing with us. Okay, Alicia, then you go first.
Hold on. Sorry, Maya. Hey, first, first thing, Maya, can you turn your mic up at all? It might just be me. I can hear Laurel, okay. It just might be the room. So you don't have to do it right now. I just.
No, you're right. I appreciate you mentioning that because I never turned my mic on. And now I feel like I'm in a stadium, so.
You don't sound like it here. You sound really good. Oh, good. So I wasn't losing my hearing.
It's just really enthusiastic.
No, I appreciate it. I could hear you, so I don't worry about that. It was just, I had to pay attention and I just was hoping we could turn it up. Okay. Couple of questions. The list we have here, and by the way, I pulled up a number of lists that we've been working off of earlier. And so just for my clarification, my, this is the list that Rob and Andy kind of pulled together and massaged a little. Is that correct or is this before then? Because I can't find it in mine.
This list is, wow, this is really broadcasty. This list is comprised mostly from the report shared with us from Robin Cork after working with us through these goals. It is also, I think there's a small element of what Gordon produced in our third round. But no, they're not at all.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just couldn't find it in this format. I mean, I read the ones from Robin and I read for future, further on. So this is some, something new we're seeing in some respect.
This is something new in the sense that it is bringing these into a new format. But these are all brought to us from the goal suggestions that were shared at the beginning of the year. I eliminated some of them. And to be honest, the ones I eliminated were the ones that I brought to the table because there were a lot of them. And it felt like if I was going to eliminate any, I would take away the ones that I had brought to the table. So.
Okay. And so, so you, you took the ones, hey, I might have liked the ones you brought. You took them out.
And Alicia, just to, I, please forgive me if I'm interrupting, but I want to emphasize once again, this is not an exhaustive list. This is a starting point for us. If there is something that you were like, gosh, Maya's idea to do blah, blah, blah was brilliant, please bring it forward. I didn't.
I will.
Things, things I brought forward were the things that Robin Cork identified as having the broadest support from the seven board members. I wanted to bring forward the things that had the most close to consensus or unanimous agreement as possible.
I appreciate that because the clarity that we didn't vote and that's how you got there. That's, I'm just kind of walking through because I couldn't find it. And so I just want to be clear. And, and you've, you've put forward a process. If we need a, we'll do, use dots. I'm just wondering if we can be clear on the process like, and I will follow whatever process you all have decided. But are we going to go one by one or do we want to start with what's missing? I just, it was just, I need a little structure in my life here. And so I just wanted to ask you what that was so I know where to interject and when. So if you've got a thought on that, I'd appreciate hearing it. Thanks.
Absolutely. And before we move forward, I want to just formally acknowledge that Gordon Laver has now joined the meeting. Gordon, you should have a link to be able to join the meeting through your computer so you can share the document. And then that way it can be on the screen for all of the folks who have joined us as attendees. Alicia, my hope is that before we go through one by one, the reason I gave you all the time at the beginning to look through it is to see what you would like to make sure is added. So instead of going through one by one, I suggest that I will pass it off to Judy before we jump into this because Judy's had her hand raised. But I suggest that if anybody sees a glaring omission or something that they would like to change, that they bring it up. As Laurel did with the noting that the North Eugene High School building was missing from item number six. If that's, if that, if that. And I am, this is, this is a work session. I'm open to suggestions if somebody is seeing a different pathway forward. We've attended this three times and I have high hopes that we come to a place where we can work together. Judy?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. One is, I wanted, is Laurel not with us anymore? I can't see her. But anyhow, I was going to respond a little bit to her point about measurable goals. I also, great. I would also, I'm just going to put something out that, so I've seen goals over multiple years and that does, in a way, makes sense and they can be adapted. But these really don't have any measurement. And I feel like it would be important to have some way to measure what do we mean by increase? Where are we, or improve? So I would probably say what, maybe what indicators we're going to use to measure it. It needs some more specificity and I'm okay with what we had tonight. If we agree that we want to add exactly how we're going to know we're going to measure. And then I would say, often I've seen, let's say you do a larger goal, then you could say for this year, we'd like to see this much progress or this much increase or this activity done. So if we're going to, you know, so anyhow, I would feel better if there was a way to say how we were going to know we were making progress. And then I think that would also help me with understanding that we are really just, we're a little over halfway through the year. So binding off what we can really focus on for the rest of the year in terms of our priorities also makes sense. And then the last thing I want to say is there's one item that I would change on here. In addition to adding the North Eugene High School, the whole north region, under number one, I know when I raised, and I think Kirthe was another person who raised it, lumping family engagement into just sort of like community engagement isn't what I meant at all by the item I raised. It's really about having, so there's a lot of information in literature on engaging parents in a meaningful way in their kids' education that really impacts their outcomes in school. And so I really wanted to seriously dig into that as a longer term, as something we would start today because there are lighter touches and deeper touches, but it's not just engaging them. Well, this is very broad to me. It just means talking, sharing information and maybe getting input. But I specifically, so I would pull that out. The parent engagement thing I raised was not this.
Okay. I appreciate what you're saying and we can wordsmith that now if we want. The reason that it is broadened in terms of categories is because not all students are living at home with parents. And because the topic, as I understand you bringing it forward, is something that I believe the community partners that we partner with could also benefit from understanding how to thoughtfully engage. For a lot of people, those community partners are the folks who are most connected to school and support systems. So I understand the language looks different because it says community care provider and family as opposed to parent. And I did change that because we talked about this particular component. But if you have suggestions for wordsmithing, Gordon is a fabulous type of.
Okay. Well, I just want to say in, in education law, the definition of parent is very broad. And it includes whoever the child's living, the caregiver. So this to me just said was how to get input just from everyone in general. So I would take up community and leave, you could take a caregiver, care provider, but it is actually covered when you look at the definition of parent. It's whoever's the kid's living with, but.
That's, that's fair. I don't know how many of our community members pay attention to that. They go ease, but it's not worth picking, yeah, in my opinion.
So, sorry, just to make sure I understand, are you asking to, Judy, are you asking to add this to take up community and just say care provider and family engagement?
And so out of school support systems and the support, I, so I don't know. I just didn't really, that didn't, when I read this, I felt like it was, we were going to look for community partners. We're going to look at families. We're going to look at community and that really out of school and just sort of, it just didn't really capture what I was trying to say. So I could work on some words. But I don't even know what this says, I guess, so. If that's what it was intended. I read it, misread it. Because the overarching thing is quality engagement. So so I'd work on some words.
Do you, if you have some suggestions for words, we are happy to take those.
I will come back.
If you're wondering what this means, I'm happy to expand because it is rooted in the language that was shared when we brought forward our proposals. But if you want to come back with a suggestion, absolutely. That's, that's the whole point here is to collaborate and work together and compromise too. For some people, the, the expansion of that engagement and involvement might be important. So now Gordon is sharing something. I'm going to request that those of you who are online, if you just speak up. I can't, I can't seem to shift my screen so that it's.
Maya, I'm online, so happy to speak up whenever you would like. Um, just in the interest again, and you guys just tell me when I'm overstepping because this is like we are six months into the school year. And in terms of getting to some sort of like clarity around this, I think one of the things I'd like to do is actually go through and maybe even hear from Andy on what's actually happening already in these categories. That way we can at least like figure out what the thing is like where we've got board goals, but the administration is already working on piece of these things. So knowing that we have to put together a budget, we have to put together some of the things on here in that this is a 2023 school year, which we really only have like five months left in. I think we need to have some sort of a triage piece on this, which is like what is happening with zinc on here. I do think somebody needs to be measurable, but I think some of it needs to be the measurements need to be reasonable, considering that we do only have a short amount of time and like we're not going to be releasing a ton of outcomes if we just put something into place immediately and expect like a whole ton of like student outcomes. So what are we expecting in terms of measurement? Is it an output? Is it participation? Are those things reach at these that needs to be somewhat reasonably stated? But like I would like to not have to re-arbitrate all of these. I would like to like get to a point where we can at least like figure out what is happening. What the like what we can reasonably expect within this coming school year on here and then go through that piece of it because I do feel like these are the same like we talked about these already multiple times. We've had these for the legislative priorities. We worked a little bit, but like I would in interest of just moving forward, like to just maybe just go through and like figure out what where we are. Is there anything happening in there now?
So before before I jump in and Kirti, because I think you missed a little bit of the introduction, I'm going to pass it to Michelle, who has her hand raised. And I think it's in response to your question.
Got it.
I feel like in looking at these points that and Andy can correct me if I'm wrong, that there is forward momentum in all of these because you have been listening to our meetings and I don't see a single one that I feel like hasn't been addressed in some.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Michelle. I'm sorry to interrupt.
In reviewing these goals, it seems to me that there's forward momentum on all of them and I would like to hear from Andy if he believes that that's the case.
So just thinking up in response to that real quick and I'll hang up again, which is why I think that's probably correct and I would agree with all that. I guess my question then is that if things are moving forward, we need some sort of way to figure out which one of these need to be prioritized in the time that needs to be happening. Or if we're just going to like if all of these are being working and we've got priorities, then our next step is to like recommend for budget. But like I don't if there's all being like we've stated what these are, then I guess my next question is like, what is the action that we are taking today? And what are the results that we are trying to get out of this?
Do you want to jump in, Andy? Because I'm also happy to.
Go ahead and then I'll make a comment.
So Kirti, I think maybe what you might have missed in the introduction is I my me sharing that in looking across the state of Oregon, especially at the larger school districts that are comparable to Eugene, 4J as much as possible, that board goals do not tend to be established with the with the expectation that they're achieved within one school year and then we move on to the next goal. The majority of them are multi-year goals. And and part of the difficulty with that is that, yes, we do have elections every two years and priorities might shift depending upon who is on the board. But the goals that we establish, including the ones that we established last year, for example, are not necessarily expected to be achievable within the scope of the what is it? 180 days that compromises school year? Is that right? 180 days roughly? So, yes, we only have a few months left, but these are also an expression of our of our intentions and vision for the school district moving forward, not in expectation that these will be accomplished by June. Seventeen, eighteen, whatever the last day of school happens to be. I'm going to pass it off to Andy though, so he can talk through because you pointed out a really important thing, Kirti. The majority of these goals that we identified and brought forward as board members at the beginning of the year in September are things that are directly aligned with the intentions and movement that our administration has established and has already begun acting on. So I think that's a that's a great thing to point out.
Let me know if I need to speak up or if like I think Judy's in line in front of me.
Oh, sorry. No, I didn't put my hand down.
I didn't put my hand down. Sorry. Gordon, I just sent you some wording to add if you want to propose.
Maya, I think that's all fine and well because I do think these are all long-term things. I guess my question for today is like, what is our like ask for today? Like, are we still just are we working these priorities to say that? Yes, we agree with these as long-term goals and outcomes for our district. Are we looking for something specifically to be able to inform the budget discussion that's ongoing? Are there specific programs? I guess my question for and I'm sorry I missed the thing I've been on. I just haven't been able to actually be on as a part like panelist is to like, what are our specific actions for today? Because I don't think there's anything on here that any of us particularly disagree with in terms of like a long-term area of work that is required for the district. So I guess I'm curious about like what are
That you nailed it in your last sentence there. My hope is that we can come to an agreement and establish our shared vision of what is forward momentum that will be beneficial to both 4J students and 4J staff. So we really, we we've spent a lot of time talking about the the various specifics surrounding language and details and and we believe before we can move forward and do the other detailed things that you just described, Kirti. We literally need to just say, yes, we agree that these are things that we'll that will benefit 4J students. So I mean, not to be dramatic, but I'm hoping that if you see something that you think is going to harm 4J students or harm 4J staff, that that's called attention to. And if you see something that's glaringly missing, that that's also brought forward. But we have to take the step of agreeing on on goals that have some details, but also have a aspirational component. So it's achievable, but it's also aspirational so that we can do both at the same time. Dr. Dye has been super patient, so I'm going to pass it off to him to answer your questions too.
It's entirely possible that since they were posed, I forgot some of the questions. So if I will answer them, please let me know. There are varying degrees of progress made on many of these. Those of over which I and staff have direct impact, then yes, and examples are family engagement, maybe not to the degree that we want to see in two to three years. And maybe not in some instances, the way that you have defined it, Judy, but not just meeting with families more often, but looking to engage them in the development of programs and enhancement of programs with feedback from them to us, not not in the opposite direction. Setting things in motion so that we can get to improved outcomes and experiences for students with disabilities. Yes. There are some things though that might or might not have progress over which we don't have any direct impact, which is engaging the board of professional development training and equity advisor work. There there are some goals in here that seem to be really focused on what the board has within its scope of responsibility and then other things that the board would want to influence through me as the superintendent. And I think that that has led to some confusion because I don't know exactly what the board could do beyond policy regarding supporting a system-wide adoption of equitable grading practices. I don't know that the board sees itself as having a direct impact on how teachers mark their grades, record their grades. So that's really confusing. What questions might have been posed that I that I have an answer?
Kirti, do you Kirti, do you have questions that that Dr. Dye didn't answer?
Um, no, I mean, I think he's answered the questions you had, which obviously there's like work going through all of these. I'm still like, I mean, if I think I'm seeing, I don't know, I do a lot of implementation planning. So like, forgive me if I'm just sounding obnoxious about all this, but um, like some of these things I see as like a visionary, some of these things I see as direct actions. So what are we actually going to be prioritizing in terms of mission, vision and goals and objectives? I think that we need to be able to have some clarity around what are our ideals for this versus like what are specific programs and things that are on here? Or what are particular actions we have in order to like right now, we've got increased clarity and transparency of communication from the board and district, the committee, for instance. That is quality engagement piece of it. But then does that mean that like we are right now looking to direct action around that? Or what those components are? So I guess what I would like to do is make this a little bit more like what are we taking action on versus what are we putting a vision together for? Because like these are not all equivalent in terms of what you would call a goal or an objective or an output or an outcome. So like I would say like increased clarity and transparency of communication, for instance, is an outcome we'd like to try to achieve. Correct? So there's multiple ways on how do we get to that outcome? On those are there's going to be different ways in how we measure what that outcome is. But are we just saying that's what we want? That's good. We're good for that. And then letting the administration, which I do think is the right way to do handle to certain extent, what the specific actions are in order for us to meet those goals. Like this is, I guess I'm, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm just going on about this, but it's like, again, this this is really broad. I think it works really well as a vision for those pieces of it and on these components of it. But like I I don't one want to put directives on an administration that's already working towards these already. And if there are things that are programs that are in place, we can use those. We can use those as ways in order to be able to measure outcomes and goals towards achieving these priorities. So that I guess that's a long way of just saying that, I mean, we do set priorities for these. We want to be directing the administration to work towards these. But I mean, like, are we putting together like another vision board like we did? Like we've been working into the last five years of this? That we were working, from what I understand, we still had a particular vision or whatever that we were operating under that Dr. Dye got stuck with also to a certain extent to meet those outcomes. Like I I want to understand, like, I I really just want to say like, what action is happening from this? Are we going to put this out as a like plan to the community? Hey, this is where we're working on towards here. Like what what's the next thing that we're taking from here?
Okay, I see that there's a few people with their hands raised and they might be in response to you, Kirti. So I'm going to go ahead and and bring them in. But yes, you're right. There is visionary elements to this as well as more tangible things. It's important that we remember that getting too far into the weeds is not our purview. So yeah, I mean, again, if there are things that we want to eliminate from this and keep it in the category visionary or if there are things in terms of like visions and we want to be more tangible, that's what we're here to discuss. If you want to just do a time check, it's six oh seven. So I want to make sure that we're moving forward and that we can come to a place where we can make a make a motion and decision in our public meeting tonight, if possible. It's February, so it'd be nice to, if nothing else, agree on some visions. Judy? Zoom is messing with me again. Okay, Alicia, I'll go to you then next. And I see that Gordon has his hand raised and hasn't had a chance to speak, so we'll do Alicia then Gordon.
Do you want to let Gordon speak? Because I've already spoke once.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Alicia. I I just want to say in my experience in the last in the last four years, these goals are are something in between vision and like exact action I have of the kind that we would vote on. And it's basically saying, what are the what are the priority things that we want to spend our time on? And and we've had in past years, board had a goal, like one goal was to increase transparency and a goal was to improve third grade reading and a goal was to reduce the amount of time on testing. And in none of them did we say, here's exactly how we're going to measure it. And some of them we made some progress on and some of them we made no progress on. But it was basically saying it's not, to me, it's more concrete than a like five-year vision thing in that it's saying, these are the main things that we want to work on, given the time that we have. But how exactly that gets done is partly a collaboration of what's already happening in the district and what we think we can do and, you know. So then I would think the more specific things would come up in individual meetings. So if we want to say we want to increase equity around around special education services, then we should have a session or something that says, okay, where are we at and what should we be doing about that? And that's where it gets much more specific. So I'm I'm like wide open to people's suggestions and I like Judy's proposed language, but I also like these goals and would be happy to include these goals. Thanks.
Alicia?
Thanks, Maya. So I first want to start with Judy's and thanks Gordon for pointing out that you understand it because I've watched her try to explain it and I know what she's talking about because I went to a workshop on it at the Summer Institute, I think Kirti did too. And it's been really hard to articulate because we're so caught up in parenting and community engagement in a certain way that when we use the same words, we kind of fall back into what we're thinking. But I know what she's trying to say and I think she did a really nice job on those words. To me, you know, I kind of equate it to not completely, but some of the work the Family Resource Centers do about how do we involve parents in their students' education, not just asking if they want a new swing set. It's so much deeper than that. And I think so to me, I would agree with those words that Judy has put forward. I agree that we pass these tonight. We've played with them and looked at them and this board, I think, can move them forward. And then I would suggest that we just look at which ones we want to prioritize to to tackle first and do a work session on each one. And then we can talk about what Kirti's talking about. And I think Gordon, you already said this, that we can talk about how we measure it and so forth. That being said, I want to add one more. I put this forward and I pulled it and I'm looking forward to hearing my colleagues thinking on this. I had it in my first when we were first asked about what what we would put forward as a goal. And I said, and that's during our work session. I said, yeah, that's kind of normal. We do that anyway. I'm okay not moving it forward. But after our budget meeting and our budget presentation, I am very interested in putting forward something to the effect of work to stabilize the 4J budget to reduce the dependency on our reserves. When I looked at what where we're going to hit that mark or we're gonna not, right now, we're stabilizing our budget with our reserves. There is a point we will run out of reserves. That just happens. We aren't looking at ways to replenish it. So what are we doing now that we can stabilize that budget? So that everybody feels secure in their jobs and incoming to work here and and doesn't worry because we as a board took that on. And I think that's really important. As one of the things that prompted us to talk about these was our budget committee saying, so what are your goals? How do we look at the budget and see if we've achieved your goals when we don't know what your goals are? So that being said, I would love to put something like that in. I'm willing to hear what my colleagues say about that. And then I am ready to, I know we aren't voting, but I am ready to support these as written, knowing we will tease them out in future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Adding that one makes seven total, which I believe was the total we had last year, which while it is a lot, it is not unprecedented. I'm not sure who raised their hand first, Laurel or Judy? Okay, Judy, and then we'll jump to Laurel.
Interesting. I was in line to talk about the budget stuff, so I guess I want to reinforce that because I think. because I think I was prompted when Andy said, what is it that the board can do and have influence over in addition to the work the staff is doing? But I think very directly, we do have influence over that. And I do think we need a long-term plan included in that would be to look at our policy or guidance about percentage of reserves. I think I've brought this up more than once, but it is something I think we need to either feel secure about what we have in reserves, is it still best practice from when we, so related to budget and long-term planning, it would include um, uh, the percentage that we have in reserves and how we align our spending with our income. So I would support that. And then I think at some point, we need to clarify vision, strategic plan and board goals. Cause I think I'm really confused because we have Vision 2020 or strategic plan. So I think we just should all be clear about where, where, what it all is. Doesn't have to be in there.
Okay, thank you Judy. Um, I see Gordon is adding, uh...
Trying to capture what you just said, Judy.
So Judy, if you could watch what Gordon adds, then you can speak to that directly.
Is that right Judy?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Laurel?
Uh, yeah, I, I agree with, um, with Judy said about vision, the strategic plan and goals. I, I'm listening to this conversation. I'm looking at what's in front of me and it, as a board, we should be accountable for our goals, you know, where we got to them, how far we got and what it looks like. And I, I see this as so big that we would not be able to be accountable. So I guess it benefits us in that way. These are, I would love to see goals, specific tight goals of, of things that we can get done. If we can't even make goals until six months into the year, how are we going to do this much stuff? This is amazing to look at and realize we, this, this is, is all vision because I don't see how we can do it. When you make too much, too many plans, then nothing happens. You know, we're gonna keep going along as we have, which we've gotten some things done, but a lot of what we've done is running in place because we don't have goals. And I would really love for us to have just a few clear goals on this sheet. Instead of these beautiful ideas, but goals are not visions. Visions are visions. Goals are something that you, you aim for and you try for. They can be bigger, but they shouldn't be so big that you can't quantify them really. And so I would love to see that we actually pick a few instead of all of these because there's only five months left. Yes, some can go for a few, over a year, but even one part of one of these and the what is, it could, would take a lot to get it done and for us to ensure and write the policy and make, and, and check and to make sure it's getting done. There's no way we can do that with all of this. There is no way. I, I just, I'm just, I, I want a dose of reality into what this is because really what I see this is a way for a board to say that we're an awesome board. We want great things and there's no way for you, the public, to prove that we didn't try on some of these because everything's on here. So, and I, I want to be held accountable because that's why I'm on here. Because I could, my kids wasn't, weren't getting the education they needed. They were getting ignored in school. And as a mom with kids in special education, I'm here for not just to look, say, yeah, yeah, we're here, we're on the board, we're just doing things. I want, I want real stuff to happen. I want our kids to be, to have what they need. This won't do it. Please look at this board. I, I know it probably won't happen because I'm, I, I see what's going on, but it's really, it's frustrating to me and I really like the idea that at least the public will hear that somebody on this board is saying, no, this is a great idea, but huge. Give me something that you can actually do.
So Laurel, do you see any of the things on here as tangible? Um, I see a few that are very tangible. Are there that you support and do you want to highlight those? Are there any that you are...
I already, well, I said that...
...might actually not benefit the district to have as a long-term goal?
And what I said was that it's not actionable, not that it won't benefit the district. There's a, please don't twist my words. What I'm saying is that when you have such highfalutin visionary plans, there, and so, so many of them, it's not actionable. It's not, it'll be hard for anybody to see what we've done because we can always show in bits and pieces. Like Andy said, we're working on quite a few of these things that are happening. I've, I've heard about it. But I know also for two years, I've been told that there's enough um, bathrooms for our transgender students, but I'm hearing from students, that's absolutely not the case. And they have to ask somebody to go to the restroom. So what is actually happening and what is being told to the public is not accurate. Let's make goals that actually we can do and make sure they happen and we, and then we can make more. If we finish one, let's do more, but this is just huge.
So I, I just want to remind us, these are the, these are what were brought forward by all of us.
Okay.
And it's not exhaustive, like my request at the beginning was if you have suggestions, please, as you've seen, the suggestions Judy and Alicia brought forward were immediately added. Please, please...
We just saw this.
Suggestions.
After the meeting started, we thought, got to see this document. If you really wanted us to provide suggestions, we would have seen it well ahead of this time. If you really wanted meaningful involvement from board members, we would have had access to it in this form.
Okay.
So if he just got it.
It doesn't feel comfortable to me to have you implying that there were intentions behind this. Um, these are...
Obviously.
...new except...
I'm not implying, I said it.
That you brought forward and then the much-needed goal of work development, which both have actionable items on them. Um, but no, there's no intention of keeping you from being involved in this. This is a work session. Um, and, and we're here to hear your suggestions. We've been working on this since...
Okay, yes, can we hear from other board members? I've, I've heard from you so much tonight.
I don't see anybody else with their hand raised. It's six twenty-one, if nobody else is gonna offer suggestions to add. Alicia?
I'm sorry. So I know it's hard to know what a vision, a goal, a action item is and all of that. I also know this board, this who we are. And we need to give our budget committee, I feel this pressure to give our budget committee something that they can work with. I agree, these are big goals. When I look at the number and just see the top line, increase quality engagement between all involved, and then the A, B and C are how, when I read a lot of them, that's how I read them. So the goal is the heading, you know, after that. So yes, uh, if we were, um, if it were September, I would push back on you really hard. But it's, it's February. And, and so if we pass this, if we, and I know we aren't voting, my request is that we take each one of these and the A, B and C and we work on that. Like I look at some of that and I'm like, it's like my to-do list. When I get it done, I still put it on my to-do list because I want to check it off. Now, we aren't like, like student voice, we've done a lot of work. We aren't done by any means, but we have done some things. So I think it's awkward. I agree with Laurel, it's awkward, but we're a little awkward. So we can, if we can move it forward, we can say these are our goals and then we can work to give people what they need, which is, how are we going to know we did that? Um, and I just think I see work sessions where we, we take each one of these and, you know, so that's my hope is that we can move them forward, understand they are not perfect, understand what we're doing is really doing headings for our budget committee and that we really have to commit ourselves to doing the hard work of then teasing each one of these out and seeing if A, B, C or D even belongs there or if there's something else. That's a big lift, but that's how I see it. Thanks.
Hey, it's Kirti again, um, so just jumping in. Um, I, I agree with Alicia in terms of like, like looking at these as the, um, the highlighted or the bolded ones as are. Those are our goal cutters, this is our missions or visions pieces of it too. Like I think my, um, and I'm, I'm fine with, you know, taking a vote on this. There's nothing on here that I would disagree with necessarily. Um, I think what I would want to just check off with Andy and Edmund too is that places that are actually like saying something that are more direct in terms of a program, like supporting the system-wide adoption of equitable grading practice and those kinds of things that are a bit more, um... You know, that's different from saying reducing standardized testing. That's, that's giving it an actual action to, and which would to do that. So I guess I'm, I mean, I'm fine with okaying all this too, but knowing that, um, how the district goes about achieving some of these, um, prior items is going to be different from what necessarily, I mean, or from how we're suggesting it on some of these on there. But I mean, I, there isn't a category on here that I would disagree with on there. So if there's that way, Alicia, that you're talking about in terms of like, just, you know, where, this is where we want to take our, our vision for the district and, um, work on these individual pieces of it with the people who are involved in actually making those things happen. Then I think I'm cool with that. Um, I just didn't want to put something on there and then expect that like, the district has to then show us outcomes on a system-wide adoption of equitable grading practices, for instance. Like that's a very specific, um, thing on there versus like creating pathways or, you know, developing measurable outcomes. Like that's an actual specific program that we're recommending. So I guess I'm like, that's just, those are the only pieces of there, like where I'm like, that's, that's telling them how to do it. Versus giving a priority area. But I'm okay with the priority areas. Andy Superintendent, I guess this is where I would take your, uh, like, to a certain extent, like, or like there may be other ways beyond equitable grading practices or in, in addition to those, you know, so it's like, are we committing to a particular action? Are we just committing to a goal category? And I'm happy to commit to a particular goal category and priority. I think, like I said, this is all stuff that we are collectively are going to improve outcomes across the district, across multiple things on here too. But what I don't want to do is lock anybody into a particular action stream.
Yeah, Kirti, I don't think any of these are locking anybody into anything. Um, I've only been on the board for two years, but I've been paying attention to the board for many years. And a lot of the goals that get established at the beginning of the year, whether it be August or February as it is, um, do not, do not come to fruition. Um, but they are an establishment of, of the values and the, the hopes that we have for moving forward with the district. I do hope that if anybody, I'm not, I'm not calling anybody out, but all of these things come from all seven of us. So if there's anything on here that anybody identifies as being too broad and too difficult to pinpoint, feel free to, to, to pull it. Um, I don't think, I, I, you can suggest pulling other pupils, but you can also pull your own. So, um, I think that, I think that that should be part of the conversation too, is not just adding to it, but anything that, we are all allowed the, the opportunity to reflect on, on the positions that we took a long time ago. Um, and, and I encourage you to look at them and identify which ones came from you, and I mean you plural. Um, this isn't directed at Kirti at all. Um, but, uh, you know, none of these, we're not attached to any of these. We are approaching it at this work session however. So Gordon has his hand raised and then Judy has her hand raised. And then Gordon, you're marked as student. I was gonna say, is that partner?
No, I'll, I'll pass.
Okay, Judy?
So, uh, I don't know, are we going to, there's some alternative language proposed? Are we going to be clear, if we vote on something later, which language we're going to go with? Will you?
I don't know if anybody can hear you.
I said there's some proposed language on this, changes based on the conversation. Do we need to, um, have a conversation about if we're going to vote on this document? Do we include the changes or not? It would like to be clear before we go into public. And the other suggestion I have, I'm looking at under, on number two, increase equity within and amongst 4J schools. And then the letter D says, develop and measure outcomes for the progress, for our progress on equity. In a way, that's sort of what I think we're saying, would be nicer for each one of these to consider that. So maybe an overarching statement that's saying, we would, because we would like to see if we're making progress in engagement or in expanding creative innovation. So I think that's part of the conversation. So either it should be the last bullet under all of them or just like a statement at the beginning.
Hope that I have my other board member speaks, so Gordon and Michelle?
Thanks. I was just gonna say, on the, on the first meeting, I mean, I guess everybody has to hear how they feel for myself. I would support using your, your alternative language on number one and also including the number seven, the language from, from you and Alicia about the financial, about the budget stuff. Um, I don't, I'm fine with adding a general sentence, although I think some things are more, um, are more given to, to measurable outcomes than others. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to take away things that are less quantifiable, but I don't feel troubled by that.
I didn't say counting. These are, I think everything I heard is counting.
Thanks.
Michelle?
I agree, the, the language that Judy, you recommended is similar enough to the original that I think it's fine. And... Yeah, and, and number seven, that change seems reasonable to me as well.
Are there any other hands raised? I'm scrolling through. Laurel?
Uh, yes, um, I'm sure that, um, the document that you started will, um, go into this one, because you had changed some things on the first one that's not on here.
Yeah, yes, uh, in between our break right now, we'll close the work session and then we will, um, fix the document to, to show the edits and the additions and send it back to you and we can pull it back up and share it straight again if you, if we, uh, make a motion during our meeting.
Okay. Maya?
Yes, Alicia?
Uh, on number six, did we change that language? Or did we, I just, we talked about it, but I wasn't sure if we changed it.
We did change it. It was before Gordon arrived, so I'll share that with him so that it is, um, included in the final document. I have it right here. Thank you for bringing that attention, bringing attention to that.
Y'all, it's me again and I'm sorry to do this. Uh, my, um, computer is blue screening, so I'm gonna take this off and re-lock back in. In case you don't see me for a sec.
So, um, it is now six thirty-two. If there's, uh, nothing else to add, um, I'll give you a moment to speak up. Anyone? Okay, in that case, the work session is adjourned and we will see you at seven o'clock.